6:30, I'm gonna open the April 26th meeting of the Ruppland Planning Board. And first order is minutes.
Both the minutes of April 12th.
Welcome.
I got some cor- I got a correction. Tamika, last page, page six.
Jim?
The roll call vote nixed me from that one, I wasn't here.
Uh, copy and paste error, thank you Jim.
No problem, I just wanted to get that taken care of. And then I'll wait till we get to the vote, so that's where you'll ask for comments and I'll do my comments, 'cause what I've got to comment on really doesn't. Yeah.
Any other discussion, changes, corrections, additions, deletions?
I'll have something, but it has nothing to do with this.
Okay. Then, let's see, yes, Kevin is out there.
So we gotta do a roll call.
We have to do a roll call, so, roll call, Tim.
Aye.
Marilyn.
Aye.
Dick.
Aye.
Kevin. Kevin. What's the thing that says audio was going on, but...
Yeah, it doesn't, looks like all the audio, 'cause usually they got the little red thing that's up there.
The audio is on. It's not, it's on, so like...
Are you there Kevin? Is the audio on in here?
She came in and turned these on. We heard.
And we just heard Tamika talking. Can you, Dave, can you chat with Kevin from there?
I prefer to just go with video and audio and...
Okay, I'm sorry, I just...
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry about that, yeah, there was several, or not several, a couple of more permissions I needed to grant to microphone here for the, not sure why it didn't go through last time. Uh, Kevin, aye.
Okay, very good. Okay, next agenda item.
Before you go past that, Norm, I just wanted to make, um, on the minutes, I had to review the whole four-hour, um, meeting so I could still be part of the, is it Mullins? I'm sorry Dave, is it the Mullins? The Mullins Act, so I did that, and, um, Kevin, the last 10 minutes, you'd made a comment about, um, yourself and as a planning board member and as a citizen, um, I get, I'll use the word disappointed in me not having enough time in that, in an aspect for the planning board, or that site, it was a sidewalk, but it pertains to the planning board. The context of what Tamika had said, that I meant that time was, is that the, uh, the application was enough for me that I didn't really need the sidewalk, so, um, unfortunately, I'm in a time-constrained business right now, and I, I really didn't appreciate the comment that, in my mind, it was, um, going against my integrity as a planning board member, and I think I'm pretty spotless over my career with this board of trying to be available, whether it was traveling with my previous company, or available, um, from call-in sessions, when we used to do that, when we didn't have Zoom, we'd have call-in, so, I, I guess I'm just, was really objectable to that, and I've never had any complaints from citizens about my ability to work on the planning board or, or execute anything, so, I just, I just wanna make a comment that I object to that, and that's pretty much it. That's it.
Okay, hearing no further comments. Uh, item two, A and R located on Kenwood Drive.
Did we already A and R these?
This is on the other side of the road.
Oh, okay.
Would like a large size, do you have your large size transit?
I'm good.
And Ted Wood Pond is, Tackler's Pond?
Yes.
Has it installed on the GIS map, so...
Yeah. I guess we should let the lad do the presentation, I'll ask the questions.
Yep.
Go ahead.
How're we doing?
Good.
So what we got? Two lots, required frontage on Kenwood Drive, right here and here, this one I believe is...
It's five acres.
Five acres, land, and the other one's three acres, so they're well over the size required.
Yep.
Remaining land is like, well, thirty-something acres.
Thirty, almost thirty-four.
A whole bunch of frontage, but it's all, the pond and DCR and all that, so...
I was gonna ask, it looks like it's all pond, under water.
Yeah, yeah, yep. So, be a good duck hunting pond.
Yes.
So, so that's what we got.
That's where the water comes from, Ruppland High Scopes.
Right, and then go down to that pond. And this is approximately where, how the houses will be shown.
So there's access, real access from Kenwood.
Yep. Is that lined, Julian, the line with the two dots, is that wetland?
That's the well in line.
Okay.
Yep.
I was gonna ask, is that, and again, I don't know, is Kenwood part, part of Worcester watershed, or is that...
No, it's DCR.
It's DCR. Do they have a...
They have a 200-foot, 400-foot zone, oh yeah, there's all, that's why these are...
All right, so, and the houses don't fall into that zone, correct?
No.
Perfect, that was my next question. And my second to last is, are these, um, town water, town sewer?
Town, stop thinking well.
Ooh, okay.
Yeah, the water ends like, up in there somewhere.
All right, just curious. All right, good enough.
Any other questions on this? Uh, is there a motion to endorse?
I'll make a motion to endorse A and R plans, and, uh... It's on Kenwood, I can't remember the number on Kenwood. Any number on Kenwood is it?
I think it says zero Kenwood.
No, there's no number yet.
That's true.
You get the number after the plan gets recorded.
Okay, on Kenwood.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, roll call, Kevin?
Aye.
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 Mr. Chair, we have our check for 400, and we just wanna verify the number.
Six, one, two, and...
I brought a check just in case.
And is Dick will ask, check number?
He's got that, that was... This is just in case, it needed an extra.
Yeah, Mr. Lucier did that last meeting too.
Twenty-nine, twenty?
Yep.
For the amount of 400?
400, yep.
Thank you.
I haven't seen George in a long time, it was good watching him on the video.
Yeah, good to see him.
You want to go ahead, it's in your direction.
Yeah, I just...
Better than mine, I'll...
Probably, I'm asking Kevin if he's assigned this, 'cause...
I'll send that back over.
Doesn't need to, 'cause he only needs three, but wouldn't hurt to ask.
Uh, Kevin, are you gonna wanna sign this A and R plan? Will we give it back?
Um, I've got another two days until I'm not supposed to leave or do anything, I mean, what's today, Tuesday, so I can go up on Thursday?
It's not necessary.
And sign whatever.
The thing is, if you don't...
Unless they need a sooner, this might be a quick one.
If you don't, if you don't care about signing it...
They need this pretty quick.
We can give it back to the applicant tonight, so they can file it.
Can you say that again?
Okay, i- if you choose that you don't need to sign it, uh, we can then give the Mylar back to the applicant tonight, so they can file it.
Right, that's fine, I don't need to sign it, we're good enough, thank you. I'm running without mine.
Okay.
Julian, thanks, Kevin, thank you.
Okay, next item, we now have a hub, oh, no we don't.
Is there some other business I think you can take?
Okay, item four, Maple Hill Estates.
I'll be back. Yeah, Maple Hill Estate, so, um, I spoke with Quinn Engineering, and they indicated that they did a site visit, but because there were no substantial changes from the last time they did a site visit, he didn't have a need to write a memo, so whatever the outstanding issues were, they still are, this is a small number of items that are necessary to be resolved before the town meeting accepts the road.
Did he say when he did the...
I think it was yesterday, he did the site business, using the area of all, uh, active subdivisions yesterday.
Are we gonna need, he's gotta get that communication to us before the town meeting, 'cause we don't have another meeting before town meeting. So we're gonna have to make this decision, we're gonna have one of those meetings before the town meeting? To make this call? Okay.
Damn.
Just hoping he can have a lot of this stuff.
It's a little bit technical, but, the thing is, on both subdivisions, we gave a condition to positive recommendation.
Yeah.
And I really don't wanna leave it that way.
No, because the select board wants us to...
I want it to be an absolute recommendation, so, uh...
Well, next week's supposed to be, again, this is, we know how the weather is, but next week we're supposed to be in decent shape in the 60s, so...
Yeah.
That should be more than enough to get grass in, um, to get asphalt down, I mean, if they're asphalt in 56, they can definitely do a subdivision.
Everything's running, so...
Is asphalt on, for Maple?
I thought, was there some...
Sweeping was...
On Maple, the only thing was filling that crack.
Yeah.
And, uh, there was some cleaning up, obviously, there was some aluminum seeding, but I think... I'm just trying to think of what Joe, uh, I don't have, I didn't bring up the reports. On that one, whether he had visited or not, I think he said he did, there was some aluminum added, and so...
The aluminum was added, but it was too high or something, or, or no, that's why they added extra, because of the sidewalk was too high, and that's why they put the aluminum on there.
So, uh, I don't know, I'm just, uh, thinking, this is getting close. Do we need to push up some communication between Mr. Mayor and...
I was, I don't, I forgot, I was gonna see what the last report from Quinn was, 'cause I don't remember all the outstanding items.
It was next to nothing, I could see more that was like...
It was just cleanup work.
Yeah, I think it was just cleanup.
That's why when Dave just said what he did, I was like, come on, it's been 60s, the plants are open, we could get a lot of, get that checkbox done.
On Maple Hill, it was the spill rate, which I understand has been corrected.
And also waiting for the CR to come back from Boston.
Well, it has been a...
But they've already built the houses, so...
Yeah, but it's been an arrangement.
Yeah, and I'm okay with approving that conditionally, as long as we get a copy of it when it's all signed off by the state.
A little bit of something near, I think, one of the fire hydrants, above the asphalt or something like that. And then there was, apparently, you've been doing the work on the fill-in, you've restored some of the land back there that needed to be seeded.
Really?
I don't know, I wanna defend the man's office.
Yeah.
Did you send an email today from him?
Yeah, this one right here.
Yeah, we got one on Bryce Lemon.
Yeah, one is one on Bryce, I spoke to Carl today.
I guess, Norm, my suggestion, he needs a motion, is that have, have Dave, um, go above and beyond and said, Cle, we're getting close, we need to have all the boxes checked. And I guess I'm being, I'm paraphrasing, but...
Well, we, we need that final report from Quinn, specific.
Yes, with everything resolved, with the exception of the CR.
Which, well, we might as well take up Bryce Lemon, you know, kind of at the same time, 'cause I think we're in the same position there.
If you're gonna do that, we just have, uh, you want the paper copies and the memos that we've spoken about?
Isn't much.
I don't, I guess I need to ask the board this, and I don't remember this, the number four on this, with the higher velocities, I don't remember that, maybe it was a meeting that, it was part of, it was done back in 20...
You only have one page?
Oh, there's two.
It's three pages tall, it's back, except that...
You got three, Dick, you didn't get the double-sided one, like...
Anyways, I printed one out, I'll sell it to you, but that's why I'm...
So, I guess, does anybody...
I don't, I don't have a particular recommendation.
Yeah, I don't either, that's why I'm struggling, 'cause 10 feet per second, it's a pretty good flow rate.
Yes, it is.
That's the only reason I'm bringing it up to the board, I'm like, yeah, that's a...
Doesn't that, does that sound a little off, Julian? I didn't hear what the, what was the question?
Um, one of the, one of the, on, on Bryce Lemon, one of the waivers was to allow velocity greater than 10 feet per second in culverts.
That's actually, 10 feet per second isn't really that high.
Okay.
Catch pace in those little, those little great steel halls, they can take up to three feet, cubic feet per second, so...
Okay.
So it's really not, it's not too bad.
All right, I just didn't remember it, and it's, and I didn't have any reference, and I went online, and I couldn't find any.
The reason why they wanna regulate the pipe, this speed in the pipe, was for erosion of the pipe.
Yes, yeah.
So...
I was worried about going over it, that's what I was worried about.
Plastic doesn't have the same erosion as concrete pipe that...
Or ceramic.
So, that was why that was kinda...
With that speed, there's not gonna be any silt.
No, we'll clean it, we'll clean it. Yeah. I was more worried about going over the culvert, and the 10 feet per second is fine, and I'm like, oh. All right, that's it, that was my only one, I mean, one to eight.
I had no comments on it, I think that was pretty good.
But he had a lot of issues with the, uh, was this the one that had the, um, handicapped?
Yep.
That, that's gotta be fixed. That was the 25 and 26.
Number 19 also.
I apologize, I'm jumping ahead now.
Which I did, I did talk with Cle, and I think he said that he was gonna take care of that.
And I had this question too on 18, Norm, and I didn't remember seeing it in the video, private drain?
Yeah.
Which...
It's, it's a drain that he'd been...
Between the two houses?
Yeah.
Oh, is that in the, the back, to bring up?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's on private property, so I agree. Okay, I just was trying to picture where the heck that was, okay. I don't care about number five, about the tree spacing, I think we agreed that that was, but it still was on here as the board, the office defers to the board, so, I was gonna say, that one should probably say resolved by board, but...
Was this already discussed by the board, if not, maybe we can just get a quick motion just to acknowledge that as a field change, and then I'll follow up with...
Number five?
Yeah.
That's strange, because I thought we had already done it.
Yeah, well, I'll make a motion to, uh, um, we wanna use it as a waiver of the, um, requirement of the spacing of 50 feet and the approximate 30 and 10, 30 trees on Woodside and 10 on Oakley.
Just to kinda, I think you want that to be a field change?
Yeah, to just be a field change, that'll be on the final last bills.
Any discussion on that, we got a motion in a second. The end, poll, Kevin?
Aye.
Uh, Dick?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Aye.
So, do we want to have Dave, instead of sending this big report, cut and paste from this report, the three or four things, and say, oh, you got to the beginning of the meeting to get them done?
Well, it was saying to me, yeah, even if you're just referring to it by number, no, I have a number as well, I don't...
I think, certainly, we're out of copy of this.
He does.
We just say the unresolved items.
Okay, I'm good with that. I just, the ramp thing's sort of throwing me for a loop, 'cause, do you have to rip that out and replace it?
You know, I don't know what's involved with it either, I recognize what's, uh, maybe substantial.
Yeah, 'cause...
Ripping the red.
But, I mean, I, me personally, I don't wanna give a waiver for...
No, no.
For handicaps at all, I want, that's state, so... State? Okay, I just wanted to make sure, 'cause I... So that's gotta be resolved, okay.
30 and 31, I'm pretty sure Joe Buffett said that he was up there and hadn't done.
Okay, that'd be great, check the... Surprise, 'cause this, 'cause Carl said he was out there yesterday, and he didn't see it, so he, he typically doesn't put stuff in his report. I just verify with Cle and just tell him 30 and 31, just tell us it's resolved. And then have, and then just have Carl put it resolved for the next...
Doesn't it say resolved below it, though?
No, 32 says resolved.
Yeah, just for 32.
Yeah, 30 and 31 don't have it resolved. 'Cause I remember we discussed, or that spike, and we were, 'cause above it, there's someplace up here about the, the fence being put around and, and a rod being put, and I remember us saying that was okay.
Yeah, I remember that too.
And then he just, 35, he's gotta do this street sweeping and clean that up.
Yeah, you know, the only thing is, I'm just, I'm thinking back to when we did our, our field inspection, I don't recall any significant, uh, sand or silt on the road base, I really don't. Anyway.
All right.
I know beginning of next week, I'm definitely gonna take a ride out there to Kenwood this week, but maybe we should try it.
My phone's ringing off the hook with our construction guys. I'm off the clock. See you in the morning.
Anyway, so we're gonna give, uh, Cle a little...
Tickler?
Tickler, yeah. Get this stuff done.
And of course, those are the only two that were on for roads, correct? Bryce Lemon and Maple.
In phase one, again.
Well, phase one.
Yeah, phase one to clean it up, because, yeah.
Okay, anything else on Bryce Lemon?
Got Britnella Estates.
Don't give you anything on that one.
So the same basic idea as on Maple, um, a site visit was done, but there was no observations to make that were different from the prior site visits, so the board doesn't have any memo.
Yeah.
Okay.
Still working on that first one, crossing.
Can, can I just, the only thing I guess I was gonna ask, Norm, on this one, for this week, is there any chance we can ask Cle and, I apologize, I don't remember the engineer's name, the bridge engineer?
Hannigan?
No, it was a gentleman, he came in here, uh, he, I was impressed.
Mike Maroney.
Thank you, Mike Maroney, is there any chance we could ask for the other crossing details, 'cause I don't think they've been supplied to the board yet, and I really would like to have a complete detail set, instead of waiting till they start it. Well, the first one, but he's got another crossing he has to do, Mike said that there was...
Well, they started both of the crossings.
Oh, I just thought they had the big one.
They, they don't have any aluminum culvert in the second one.
Okay.
Part of the foundation.
Well, then I'm really gonna say we should have drawings of the second design.
When you say the second one, which, what are you referring, if I'm at the, on the existing subdivision?
Yeah.
One, one closest to Brimble.
Closest to Brimble.
Yeah, I consider that the small one, 'cause the big one is, I think it's got three, three or four aluminum culverts go at it, and then the other one's a smaller crossing.
And I assume any additional engineering reports that are...
Yeah, anything Mike's got for his field reports or anything like that, 'cause I think we're all squared away on the first one, we got the drawings, we got all those reports, everything, but I haven't seen anything on the second, I really like to make sure we dot our i's and cross our t's for that one. So, okay, that's the only thing I have for Britnella Estates.
Well, let's see, we still have a few more.
Bear Hill?
No, it's Bear Hill two, I don't believe we have anything on that one.
The same, the same. The site condition not being substantially different from the prior.
What's eight, is that, is that, do we need to comment on something?
I didn't see you have that in the packet.
It's not in the packet, what I did, I provided a link to the website, where the information can be found, I mean, after this next hearing, if you would like, we can jump out of the share screen and go to the website itself. So, it's a matter, as you recall, so because...
I'm listening.
And the zoning act requires that anything that goes before the zoning board come before the planning board, but the planning board's option to come, if you'd like to, if you don't see any, anything really to say about it, then that's, that's it, but sometimes it might be interesting that a planning board may have, so we just put these on the agenda in case this is one of those times.
Yeah, I just, I liked it, I didn't see the link, it, the non-conforming thing is what got me a little bit.
So, yeah, because I, I wanna see it. I remember, um, was it precision, that's the, is this the particular building?
I don't know.
Area, well...
We can provide more information on this in a few minutes.
After the hearing, we can take a look at, take a look at this.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like that.
Well, two more minutes, uh, item nine, Main Street, decision review, uh, we don't have that one.
I don't have that one, been a bit bogged down with other things.
That is off.
Okay, so we'll push that.
You have a minute, uh, maybe we can come back to these other ones, unless you wanna jump into silent, that's fine.
It'll take more time.
Yeah. Let's just wait a minute.
Yeah.
I will tell you that East County Road, that decision's not ready either, that was from the... That was from the, the last meeting, that was at two lot common driveway site plan.
Yeah, that's the one that, uh, there was a lot of wetlands, if I remember. No, no, that was the one. Yeah, I didn't get the...
This is steepness.
Yeah, I didn't get, 'cause I was gonna ask, and of course I wasn't here for that, is there was another, looked like an access off of sixty-eight that tied into that?
Glenwood.
Is it Glenwood?
Yep.
Opened back. 'Cause it, the other one came across off of Wachusett Street? I don't know what I'm talking about, I'll skip it.
But let's wait.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, clock says seven o'clock. So, uh, we're back to a public hearing, uh, at zero Wachusett Street, from one thirty-two East County Road and one sixty-three Wachusett Street, East County Road, special permit for three lot common driveway.
Oh, that's this one, sorry, Dick.
That was this one.
Yeah, you changed it?
Yeah, let me just, there's a couple of things that came in late today. What is the application for special permit? Because the matter's actually a special permit situation on a site plan review. So this application addresses that change, as well as common driveway specific findings of fact. Does the board have enough full-size copies? You need some full-size?
No, I, this one's, this eight and a half by eleven's, maybe at least.
I believe the applicant has representation here tonight.
Is someone here on the, on the left, on the right?
Start over. We have that number up on the show. This is the piece of property, I'm Julian Vetruba, I'm in environmental design. This is the piece of property off of Route sixty-eight and Wachusett Street.
Sorry, what did you got here?
I didn't hear your name.
Julian Vetruba.
And you are representing who?
Mark Demick. Who's purchasing the property from, I guess it's Ralph Anderson and his family.
Okay, are you a builder?
I am not, I'm an engineer.
Okay.
The plan that's up here was a plan we received prior to this, so the, the recent plan has not been updated because we didn't receive it. I wasn't able to upload it here, but you have the paper copy, the board has its paper copies.
I'm gonna bring it back to when this was done, when we split this into land, so, and then we'll go through with that. So this property used to go like so. We created these four lots out of it.
Yep.
And the driveway, these two lots in the back, the house is gonna be up here and over here, these two lots. And the driveway is gonna go through the easement across to lot two, like so, like so, went out to Wachusett Street. That was the, we also had another access coming across this way, but because of the, the river and the two-hundred-foot zone and all that, we got to stay away from that, 'cause of the DCR situation. So, we had, the original plan had two driveways, side by side, one coming into lot one, and then one toward sixty-eight, coming out and coming up to lot number two. And the question was, or it brought to my attention that, well, we'd like to see it as a common driveway for ease of cost of building one driveway instead of two driveways. But this, this form A was approved with the idea that we were gonna have two side by side, but now we're coming in for a two driveway, common driveway for this property, instead of two individuals. So that's, that's where we started. So now, the next, do you have the, the actual...
What happened is just right here, the board has the paper copies, there's enough paper copies.
So you got...
The folks out here, they'd like to...
This is the one you guys are proposing, the common driveway?
Yes, yes. That way it'll be one driveway. That goes to this lot and in passing. So instead of having two side by side.
So, there's the existing lot now.
Existing house that they're building is on...
On its own.
They got their own driveway.
Right way.
Yep, yep. So...
John?
Yes.
Is this the configuration of that addition to the...
Yeah, just gonna flip it up. Yeah.
This is, this is what it is, yeah.
This is, so...
Then number three is, is this corner with the house, the existing house.
Right.
Well, that's what we're looking to do. We don't exceed the five-hundred-foot line for, for the length of a common driveway, so we meet all the criteria.
So, lot three is not ever going to use the common driveway, but it could.
No, no.
But it could.
But it could, there is an easement across, as long as they, I don't know how they, on plan it could. I don't know if they followed up with easements in the deeds when they, when they transferred this stuff, 'cause that, 'cause it's on the plan, doesn't mean it's there. But we opted not to go that way mainly because of, well, the two-hundred-foot no-touch.
Yeah.
And, yeah, and probably goes through it a while. So, and that was when, when Ralph, I was doing this for Ralph Anderson at the time, so...
And this is not gonna be interfering with, no idea where the sewer wells are for this?
Oh, yeah, evidence away from that, that's not gonna touch, that's all been designed to, to avoid the septic in the wells.
Okay.
Yep.
And...
And their septic in their well.
All right.
Is not in that, it's not even on their lot, that's their lot.
Yeah, I know, 'cause that's one of the things I have here is... Manscaped barrier.
And I presume you're gonna know my questions, all right? You've got houses that have exits on Wachusett Street, but frontage on...
Yes.
East County. I'm struggling with that.
It's prior to, this was done prior to... And then...
Fourteen, okay.
It's also a requirement that they show actual real front, that they show frontage on, on this case, Wachusett, but make some representation that it's not feasible to access the lot from Wachusett. So if it's not feasible, how would it not be feasible? Such that the common driveway is preferred, we could do it. So do you have any...
I'm just asking, 'cause again, it's, it's one of these, I keep, the illusion of everything jumps in my freaking mind immediately.
The good old days.
Yeah, we did good old days, that doesn't go more.
The good old days.
But part of the common driveway is, Julian, there has to be a sign out there for the houses, if I'm not mistaken.
Right, they'll be, they'll be on the...
So that gives me a little bit more of...
Yeah.
Of satisfaction that, I'm worried about fire, police, ambulance, that's what I'm more worried about than anything, so... Um, it's a safety factor, if there's signs out there. It's not like they could get in from the front of the property and house, it's basically sealed with wetlands.
The river.
Yeah.
I was the owner of this lot. Okay, gotta go through, through the board.
I just wanna look at a couple of things here.
Well, you, you need to talk to them, and then we'll ask it, we'll do it that way, that way it is known.
All right, that was my main question.
Um, really, question, my son has a few concerns at his lot.
Pardon me before you go, just, we have someone taking minutes for us, could you just identify yourself and put it on record?
I'm...
Name and residential address.
I'm Peter Valinsky.
And I'm Tyler... Tyler Valinsky, I'm the owner of...
That'll help, thank you.
Yeah, I think I heard a question about whether the driveway is close to a septic or a well. My well, according to this plan, is fairly close to that driveway, the proposed driveway.
So I can answer.
That being said...
So, the driveway is completely on lot three. Your property lane is here, so your well and your septic and everything are on your lot.
No, no, he's, he owns this.
Oh, you own this, the one that's being built?
That's correct.
All right, so the one's being built.
So that's his property you're all across.
This is, it is. That's what the easement's for. This is far down on this propping lane, this house and everything are hugging this side, so there was plenty of room to fit.
And the well is actually...
It's close, but it's not in that easement. The well is not in that easement, that's why there's an easement for this driveway to, to be able to go, so... It's close, but it's not in it.
Correct. So, with that being said, is there gonna be proper, um, proper construction done to prevent any water runoff towards my well, or...
It's gonna be a driveway, it should be.
But it's, it's pretty wet terrain.
How much fill is, how much fill is gonna have to go in to make the, the common driveway?
It's, it's very wet area. I'm sorry, I gotta find this.
My name is John Durning, I live at one sixty-six Wachusett Street, which is the upper lot from the, I'm out of the picture there, but that's my...
You're on title three point oh three?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
But, and I'm Lyndon Nelson, John Durning's line.
And we're, and we're curious about how much fill is gonna be brought in, because the house that's been built there now has already, you know, set up standing water on our property.
That would be your house.
Yeah, and so, so, so much fill came in to do that house, and so it's almost like the water's dispersed, so we, you're talking about where the driveway's gonna go.
Bring in even more fill in.
More fill in, because it's so wet that you're just kinda dispersing the water to the neighbors, you know?
Okay, these, these lots were all created back in two thousand fifteen, and we went through conservation and got orders of conditions for the driveways, for all three, all three of these lots were completely permitted, are still currently permitted. And the only difference that we have before this board right now is instead of having two separate driveways running side by side with a six-to-eight-foot island in between, the proposed buyer, or the new owner, is asking to make one driveway to serve the two lots, instead of two separate driveways. So it's gonna do better for your concerns.
But Tyler, you can attest to how much fill you had to get in.
Oh, there's a lot of fill.
To get, to get dry, to just build that house, and so now you're talking...
Now you wanna add more fill, and we're just, we would like to know how much more fill you're wanting in.
It's wetter than it was before, because Tyler is building, no offense to you, but it is.
The land slopes towards, looking at that plan there, it all slopes towards the dark green color across, that's, that's the lower point of this property. So whatever we're doing on the Fitter's driveway is actually below your house and way below their house. It's all heading towards Route sixty-eight.
This, this appears like that's gonna create some sort of, almost like a beaver dam.
I agree, I, I don't disagree. I want that.
I don't have, I don't have the...
Cover or some sort of...
We just take a look at this, I only have the survey.
My name is Robert Sotter, I'm from Ridgefield, Maryland. I, I also have lived here for years, right at the street, but it is, it is wet, polluted water. Now, my concern is there's a P E notification there. When I look at it, it says the wetlands were plagued, but they don't know who did it or where they are. And right now there's silk, there's silk fencing, so how are you gonna cross that to, to get in there? I just don't understand. And in fact, you know, you say this is not a, this conservation is not part of this, but if you look at the bylaw, you know, it says the board shall consider the site's topography, soil conditions, wetlands, et cetera. I don't know if you've considered that, if you are.
This has gone through a series of hearings, which is still valid, for an order of conditions to allow to build this configuration. See the two driveways? There's one going here and then one goes over there.
You're reducing the imperial surface.
The drive, yeah, the surface of this idea, so it's actually linking less. Where downhill from this one, two, four, four feet lower than in this house that we're getting?
Tyler.
Yeah, in here.
Tyler.
Tyler, Tyler's. And then over here, as far as their places up here, there's no way anything here is going to go up that way, that's just not, not possible. It's two, four, six, eight, it's ten feet of elevation change.
Buddy, you know that.
This one's all built up. Now, if I'm in here, the concern, talk about creating possibly a dam in here, there was, there is, well, it may still be, there's a little, there's been a little car road here, and there was a whole, oh, did he got a race rink or something over here? Is that what he had? You know.
Yeah, I know.
You know. There was a, yeah, something he used to drive cars in a circle, a little, uh...
Fox, go-kart type of...
Go-kart, or Jeeps or something. So this is actually paved here, it's already existingly paved, so, and we're not changing the grades in that area, so...
Behind Tyler's house, you get wetter and wetter.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, it goes lower and lower over there. The low spot isn't at Wachusett and, and sixty-eight, it's the low spot is down below that, coming back.
Are those, Julian, I'm looking at what you have, are those contour lines at the beginning are going down, no, on, on the driveway itself?
Going down, 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 down.
All right, that's what I wanted to know.
This is a well in here, this is a well in here.
All right.
It's all going down.
From a contour standpoint, and I understand the water flowing, basically following the driveway down.
Four, six, eight, ten, twelve, about twelve-foot difference between Wachusett Street and this existing, right here, there was, there's probably still out there, I don't think anyone ripped up the asphalt, it was probably still there, for whatever he was doing over there years ago. There was a big circle that went around this whole thing, so... But as far as the environmental issues, this is, like Tim said, less impact, 'cause we're miminizing, miminizing the, uh, this driveway, from two separate driveways to one driveway.
Yeah, your imperial surface is gonna be about two-thirds of what you had before.
And we're inside the parameters, so that's, uh, shouldn't be an issue, and they're all, they're all current orders of conditions, so...
Okay. But we can't consider that anyhow, that's the common con's requirement.
And here is a two-hundred-foot zone, so this driveway that came up this way, we're going right through it, and at the time, because it was owner-occupied, possibly, it was an idea, just to keep as a precautionary measure, but what would have to be done to put a driveway in, other easement?
Common con doesn't have any authority.
Not, no, it was D C I.
That's what I was gonna say, you gotta go to the state.
So it's, if there's a way to avoid it, guess what? We gotta avoid it.
You learn from Clea.
Oh, it's a...
D C R is a...
So that's, that's what we got. This is, every thing on this plan is pretty ac, is, is very accurate, except for this driveway here, and it's gonna be small.
In the event you have the driveway going in, you're gonna have to bring fill in here, there's no doubt, that's...
Yep, yep, we're showing.
What can be done to mitigate any ponding that could occur?
Well, what's happening, actually, if you...
Render it useless.
If you wanna take a look at this, this plan here, this, this one shows contours, you don't have contours on this, so I can ask them to come in.
Yes, you've got a twelve-foot drop, basically, so you adding fill or pulling it out, Julian?
Somewhat in here, I don't know if he built this exact shape, but you're here, your septic's here, and your driveway's coming into the drive under. There's driveways down towards, this is the actual tree line, the lawn and the, and the woods, so it's coming right on the inside of that tree line. And these are two-foot drops, every one of these lines drops two feet, two feet, two feet, two feet, so it's going a two-foot constant, drop, 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 all the way down to this point here. There's a, there's a wet area in here, it was some, it was split by an old paved driveway back here, and then it continues off to the, to the brook. So, this couldn't create backing up to you.
I think what the thought we would have was, excuse me, Paul, if you put something in here, that's gonna back water up, that's gonna be...
Well, we're not showing any change in grades here, so what's happening now should be happening later. So I guess we could, we could look at it. Do you even wanna take a look?
Now, these are the current grades?
These dash lines are the current grades.
The two feet, two feet, that's the current grade, and you're gonna put fill in it.
Listen, listen what I'm saying. The dash lines are current grades, the solid line are proposal grades. Listen, listen what I'm saying. The dash lines are current grades, the solid line are proposal grades. So right now, the, the land slopes like this. We're gonna follow that same slope, but we're gonna, we're gonna even it out so it's a driveway, but it's all going away from Watrousett Street.
I see. As you fill in here, it's not gonna...
It's gonna run off, yeah. It's gonna run off, yeah, for sure, but that's where it's going now, as we're speaking.
But it's mainly gonna, that driveway's gonna act like a channel that's gonna send it down towards the river, and, uh, yeah, down there. It's basically gonna act like a channel. It's got, it's got trees on one side, and it's got a...
Some sort of, oh, for the lack of a better word, a French drain here. There may even...
Some way to get the water. There was a lot of stuff in here. There may be even something underground here. There might be a...
A culvert. There might be one there that was just all buried in.
Pretty sure there is. So we'll make sure that that's open, so it doesn't create a dam.
Because that is paved, it is still paved. It's kind of...
It's still paving.
Yeah.
So it's got, is it, when you say paved, asphalt type of?
Yeah, they paved it.
Yeah.
Long time ago.
Okay. Long time ago.
So he's gonna pave driveway in his...
How about sixty years? Something in years.
When did they invent paving?
Just have to slice bread.
As long as it's not chip and seal.
And, um, Rich, what the hell did he have? I know he had a doodle bug. Oh, my God.
So is there gonna be proper, this is higher, this means it's higher than my well. Is there gonna be proper water retention to guide the water away from my well? So it doesn't puddle up on my side?
Well, it shouldn't, it shouldn't puddle up. It's gonna, it's gonna, the water goes ninety degrees to the contour line, so it'll go, and then it heads perpendicular to it, so.
It's not gonna be a double, double, if you're saying to make it small.
No, you know, what we could do is we could hug this side, because that's further away, most likely.
Because I'm gonna be asking for a landscape barrier, okay? Well, they've got one on the other side, Dick. It's got trees there now.
No, it's actually lawn. That's the opposite. We're in the woods.
Oh, so the woods are getting taken up?
On this side, so. So we've got a twelve foot driveway or fourteen foot driveway, which is plenty wide for, seeing Campbell Street is fourteen feet.
There should be plenty of room.
So, can we do... How is, what is the actual width of the driveway gonna be?
Um, right now, let me see what we ended up.
Someone's gonna have to put poles on that.
Looks like, it looks like twenty feet, Julian, if I'm doing my math, because it looks like you got a, a five foot barrier on each side, and the width of that easement's thirty feet. So it looks like...
Probably eighteen is what they're counting. But that's really wide, and we really need to, if the, the board would... That's, that's very wide.
I don't think we'd go more than fourteen. Probably more than twelve. It's plenty wide enough for the driveway.
Will they set power poles on that?
Yes.
What's...
There'll be one.
Narrow, which will allow for... Well, I'm more worried about, again, I'm going back to the safety thing. I gotta get a pumper truck back there, because you're on well and sewer, you're not on water.
Twelve feet should be fine. Every other driveway's twelve feet.
You're thinking about a Campbell Street's fourteen feet. A heavy truck in there?
Yeah, well, i- if it's asphalt, I just wanna make sure there's room, you know, again, I don't know the exact width of, of our trucks. I probably should, but I don't know the width of, uh...
You're fitting a garage, right?
Yeah.
They're not twelve feet.
They're not twelve feet. There you go. Maybe a seven foot wheelbase.
Then, yeah, then twelve's fine there.
Eight feet.
Eight feet. Thanks, Darren.
Eight feet is...
So you got, you got two feet on each side then?
If there's no snow.
Yeah. Well, that's the home, that's the home agreement that we will be getting to.
Yep, there's, we submitted a, a whole agreement.
Tim, man.
I don't know. The, the one thing I'm just wondering is if we might want to put a condition on this that any existing culverts be upgraded.
Yeah.
Be upgraded.
And if there isn't one, we'll put one.
Put one in. Yeah, 'cause if you're doing a liking kind change, I'm having a tough time with anybody.
Yeah, nobody, nobody wants to make this, make this a dam and create a problem.
Yeah, basically, if you...
So that's why there's no grade lines here, because what's happening now is happening later, but you can help that by making sure that that culvert's open or put it on. It's not an issue.
That's reasonable.
It's all downhill from here.
All downhill. Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, well, don't get too far over there, because...
No, it's another well in over here.
Because, uh, yes, there's the little brook that's running down.
Punky's pond.
How many houses are going in there?
Two.
Just two.
Two houses.
This is lot three. One, two, three.
Uh, what kind of a well do you have?
Artesian, new drill.
No.
Yeah, Tyler, what type of, do you have a?
Artesian well.
He's an Artesian?
That's a brand new one. They just drilled.
Yeah, they drilled it, and that's the one I hollered at, because I thought they were right through the driveway.
Uh, and, excuse me for not knowing, Artesians is only...
Well, it's a drilled well. Artesian is a true well that blows water out. I don't believe that one blew. Only the one across the street.
But it's not a deep well, it's a...
Drilled, drilled well.
Oh, yeah, it's only a hundred feet.
Ooh, that's shallow.
It's a drilled, it's a drilled well with a steel casing, and pounded into the bedrock.
Correct.
And, you know, that's, that, that's, at least my, my understanding, my, my thought is that when they do a drilled well, and they literally drive that casing into the bedrock, your chances of getting surface water pollution is very, very slim, no matter what. Now, for the dug well, that's, that's a whole different story.
So, yeah.
So the only other...
Just to be conservative, I think.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, absolutely. That's, when we grade it, it could be, when they grade and buy that well, we'll just grade it flatter and then tip it, so that the water goes past the well and then goes.
Because we don't have a grassy area on both sides to do that.
Right. Well, because this, this is the plan that was part of the original, but we're gonna narrow that down.
We could actually make a swill on both sides to keep the water going down.
So, to back up a little bit, you're talking about a fourteen foot...
Well, it upped to the board, so what will you, what will you guys allow us for common drive, narrowest common drive, and this application for two houses only?
No.
We don't have it. So I think if the board is looking to put a condition, I think your H V has a, for safety, public safety, you have to consider what public safety...
I want some, I want some space on the side, especially if that Darren Ross's driveway.
Yeah. Can he back up well?
Yeah, he can back up really well.
Okay.
What's it behind him?
Most driveways at eleven to twelve feet.
If you're looking at a basis for the decision, you may wanna take the public safety equipment and access along the way.
Yeah.
And I don't...
One lane of a road. Subdivision, twelve feet is all, is one, is one lane, so.
The thing is, I don't remember. I was putting a specific...
But it's, it's a right of way to pass. Nobody can park there, so.
No, it should be...
I think that's the idea, to pass.
Well, twelve feet should work.
Yep. I'm hoping that. Twelve. That's, that's where it's gonna go from here to here, so there's plenty of room, like Mike was saying, it's a swell, so that the water stays in this and goes down and doesn't interfere. Plenty of room to do that. I don't mean to...
I think you've got a little bit of fill to go in here anyways from that driveway, so.
Raise it up, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a bit of a, a dip by the road.
So Julian, you could basically put the road in, and then have, since you got thirty feet on a twelve foot driveway, sway it on the side. So that basically does, basically turn that driveway into a channel that'll bring it down.
I'll bring it all down right back to actually our own property.
I'm fine with that, yeah.
And I, I am going to adhere to what I normally do on shared driveways, that this will be a leveling area.
Oh, at the front, so it's level with the street, so you can have sight?
Not only sight, but you don't want to be able to come up at an angle and sit there and your tires are spinning.
Right, no, we got this contour dragged out, so it's pretty, one full cow length is, okay, maybe a foot and a half. Yeah, I agree with you on that.
Yeah.
That's not a very steep driveway.
No.
Not like, not like yours over here.
No, that was a little steep, huh?
Well, zero to twelve feet, that's not an average driveway. Well, it is where, where I live, but it's, it's, zero to twelve feet is a pretty good slope. What's the distance for?
No, we're going, we're going two feet over.
Yeah.
Uh, the twenty scales, about twenty-two feet, twenty-four feet.
Okay.
That's, that's probably this.
Yeah, so it's... All right. I've just lived here long enough, ice and snow, any type of slope, unless you got a four-wheel drive vehicle or some great snow tires. Anyhow, I'm, if I'm going down a plow with the rail trail, I'm not gonna stop to do.
Okay, do we have any other questions or comments?
I, I have a general question, and it's about your bylaws in general, um, to read it. Says it must involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise. But this is on behalf of David Allen, who's deceased, so who, who's the hardship to? That's what I'd like to know.
Yeah, who owns the land?
Who owns the land?
Hardship, is this for the downed driveway? I don't see that in there.
This is what's in the, the hearing notices.
The original petition says in, "For benefit of David Allen," I believe.
David Allen, Ralph, innocent.
Right.
This, this here says...
Well, David Allen's been dead for ten years.
Right. He owns the property now.
I know, but I'm asking, I'm asking what, you know, the benefit of David Allen, well, who, if David Allen's deceased, then who's the benefit?
The owner of the land, whether it's Mr. Smith, David Allen, or whoever.
According to the tax man, David Allen still wants the land.
Which is why he's on the advertisement. So who was, so who was his trust?
It's the trust of David Allen.
Can someone tell him where is this?
Okay, and who's the executor of the trust?
The Al Fanderson.
Okay.
Jonia.
So who has the substantial hardship? Where, where is the financial hardship? Mr. Chip, it's all, to me, it's to, to...
To get out to the property.
But hardship doesn't have anything to do with this, because hardship is for various...
Where's that in the bylaw? I'm curious.
You can show me where you're referring to.
Yeah, 'cause I'm looking at the, Dave, this is the complete town bylaw that we have, right?
Yeah, that's fifteen...
I understand your concern, and you got the...
Fifteen section.
Yeah, fifteen F common driveways. Common driveways is for special permit in this case.
Yeah.
But this is a, this is a zoning well. Right, so fifteen F is this section for common driveways, where it indicates that it can be done by site plan for two lots, by special permit for three. It has the requirements for the length of the driveway not to exceed five hundred feet.
But this is, right, but this is a zoning bylaw, and right in your bylaw, it references a mass general law.
I know, but this, this section is, this section applies to variances. This is not a, variances shall be granted. This is for a special permit. That's for variances. That's for a different section. That does not apply here. This is a special permit situation, and there's different fire...
No, it didn't have to be written in the bylaw.
No, I understand.
No, no, no.
I got a question, Dave, on this one.
Questions are always good. I just need those as variances stuff.
Trust me, he's been doing it slightly.
Oh, no, no, I'm good with that. I just was, I just don't remember that when we were doing this before.
Could you give us your name?
Yeah, Robert Sotter, three, three rich road.
Thank you.
Okay.
Hey, hey, Julian?
Yes.
Kevin here. Can I, just one question on the actual driveway and utility easement. So as I, I read through it all, it was very clear, and I think the verbiage of the common driveway easement area.
Yeah.
I'm just verifying on the map that it shows on the plan and the deed that it's, the map that I'm, yeah, I'm not there, but the map that I'm seeing in the packet that David gave, should it be listed on that map? I just don't visually see where it's written on a map where the actual common driveway.
It's on, it's on our register. It's right there where the two eighty-three.
Right.
Looking at the screen.
This driveway's gonna be three pots, two privately, and then one pot common.
The recorded plan at the registry, as the recorded plan shows, and it's that, I don't know if you can see me if you're looking at your screen. This is the...
Yeah, I can't see much, but...
Right here, where it says two eighty-three, oh nine.
Yeah.
That is the easement. That's a recorded easement that went with the plan. That's etched in stone on this property to give this property the rights to, these lots, one and two, to cross over that to get here.
So that, that easement, Julian, to, to Kevin's, is part of lot three's deed.
Correct.
To cross it.
Correct.
Okay, I'm good.
Correct.
And then the next easement.
Is on lot one.
Lot two is, is cross lot one.
Correct.
Okay, I'm good.
Yeah.
How wide, how wide is the easement from Watrousett Street?
Thirty feet.
Thirty feet at the entrance, and then...
That gets real wide.
It looks like a hundred and twenty-three at the, at the, at lot, at lot one.
Right.
I know, too.
And then it goes back to thirty-seven, and then I think it drops to...
Probably twenty.
Yeah, it's not thirty feet, that's for sure.
So my, so my point, Julian, was that lot three, oh, you know, lot three has a full easement, which is the common driveway portion.
Yeah.
Once that breaks off, you have your individual owners have their own portion of the driveway. Is that a fair statement?
Correct.
So I'm just saying that typically wouldn't be listed on the map or the deed. That's just done through the verbiage. So like I said, the verbiage...
No, that's actually on a recorded plan and deed.
Indeed.
It's, these are actually recorded easements for...
I got you, okay.
Right, that's shown on the assessment.
It's through, it's through this, through tonight, that's gonna record this as the...
It's already been recorded. Tonight is to allow us to put one common driveway where we originally proposed two driveways.
As a site plan.
As a site plan.
I'll get this special permit.
But you don't actually list it on the map.
Oh, you're right, yeah, 'cause...
Where the common driveway stops, and the owner of lot two's driveway begins.
Yeah, right to that point, they get their own, they're on their own.
I get that, but it's not listed on the map. It doesn't have to be.
It is. It's on, it's on, that's the recorded plan.
He shows it well on that.
Yeah, it's on, it, yeah, yes, it's on, this is the recorded plan that shows. And at this point here, they, this one has its own, and they have their own, so the common pad is only on lot, on this...
On lot three.
On lot three. That's the common pad.
I don't think this one's recorded, is it, Julian, this one?
That is, no.
I don't think that's recorded.
We did, we drew it there.
The last recorded one.
The only recorded one is that one right there.
Yeah, it looks just like this. This is the actual recorded plan from the registry.
Yes.
That shows.
I think that's what, I think that's what Kevin's getting to, is the drawing.
Okay, the drawing, we have in our package. We added the driveways for that.
Yeah, okay, yes. It's not a recorded plan.
But the property lines, any easements depicted on that are on a recorded plan.
Common drives, yeah, so like number one, in the declaration of common driveway, the lots and the owners thereof shall have the right in the common with others to use from time to time the common driveway easement area.
Correct.
For that term, all capitalized, common driveway easement area, is not depicted on...
No, that verbiage should have probably said driveway and utility easement.
Yeah.
Well, we have, you have two plans that you submitted, so we have a, a site plan for common driveway. It shows the easement on the, on the plan with a reference to book page nine sixteen, plan one fifteen, that shows the extended easement on the plan. And then you may have the other plan, which is the...
Oh, so, yeah.
Took from me, which I...
Kevin actually has a good point, because it probably should list, because you've got two easements here. One's a easement, and the other one's a utility, and my mis...
But it's the same, one in the same, in that same area. The driveway's going in that spot regardless of what you call it.
Okay, and it's in the deeds to allow that.
For driveway and utilities to go in that area.
So let me ask the question. That plan right there that we're looking at on the screen, that is the plan nine sixteen and book one fifteen plan? I'm sorry.
Nine sixteen, one fifteen.
Okay, it is. All right, that makes me feel a lot better then.
Yes, it is.
Because now you've got the recorded with the rooster registry deed, the one coming off of Watrousett Street, and then you've got the other recorded easement that's crossing lot two and a lot one.
Yes.
Okay, I'm good.
Crossing lot one into two.
I get, I get my freaking drawings all turned around.
It's up on the top of the screen.
Yeah, you're right, lot one and lot two, thanks. Okay, yes.
So the common, so I just wanna verify, the common driveway easement area doesn't, unless I'm not seeing that map, it doesn't need to actually be written on the map?
No, because it's going into...
That, that terminology does not need to be shown on the map to actually show where it starts and ends.
It's on the recorded plan.
So if somebody wants to pay, take it to, so for plowing purposes, you know, then it, it's not a fifty, is this fifty-fifty split? If somebody's plowing all of the impervious area, are the two owners paying fifty percent of it each?
Yes. Yes.
My point is that I believe that this...
It is defined. It's, it's mathematically defined, the area they have rights to cross. Yeah, in, in section C of the declaration, it says one half shall be paid by owner of lot one and one half shall be paid by owner of lot two for groundskeeping. So that's defined in the agreement.
I hope everybody understands what I'm, so if you take the total lineal footage from Wachusett Street up to lot two's house.
Yep.
Right, once you pass lot one's driveway, the remaining portion of that area, does that all belong to lot two? Or the owner of lot one has to maintain that extra three, two hundred and whatever feet of driveway?
Right here, it's going to split. This guy takes care of this to here, and then they both maintain this part where it splits. And then this, this guy does not have to fix, well, this guy's driving.
The entire easement of lot three, I would consider to be the common driveway. Everything that's in lot three.
It didn't say for this driveway.
The majority, the long part of lot one for the house of lot two is all his, and then all of the driveway in lot two.
That's what Kevin's trying to make a point.
Would be the owner of lot two.
That whole, that whole common driveway actually goes to the beginning of lot two's driveway at the property line. So that's why is that common? It's his driveway. But there's an easement crossing over.
The easement's still, the right of way is still owned by lot three. He owns the right of way. The easement just allows passage through the property.
The common part, that way you have to get a permit for is the common part. Lot one's driveway doesn't... So it ends, I don't even want to write it, but this, in a way, it's written. Well, I get that, but... Either way, it's, it's protected with a location by a plan that's recorded where this falls. That's all I wanted to get to. That's definitely etched in stone. I just wanted to make it clear that that's part of the five hundred feet, which you're under.
Less than.
Yes, yeah, you're under. But it goes to the farthest opening of the driveway, which is at lot one's driveway at the, at the lot line, basically. So what, what I was trying to get, and I think Kevin was mentioning, is the declaration of the common driveway, it's written for the easement on lot three and on lot one.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, I'm fine. I just, I see what Kevin was getting at, because I'm going like, yeah. But on the flip side, that easement for lot one to pass over to lot two and lot three is on a recorded plan nine sixteen, book one fifteen to indicate that. So...
And that's all that's necessary.
Yes. Tell me when you want to get to the declaration, because I got a question. Sorry. Marilyn, start kicking. Under A, the common driveway repair, I'm struggling with the OR. Oh, okay, do we, it's this one, Norm, it's right after, it's in the packet. The... People paved or gravel? No, it says gravel bed or paved driveway. So typically, you've got to fix one or possibly both to do that. As we've seen in fifty-six right now, they've had to fix the gravel bed before they put the paved drive on top of it. So that's why I don't like the OR. Because it said, I like the gravel bed and paved driveway shall be maintained in good condition. I'm, I'm sorry. Marilyn, if you're in the, in our packet.
Yeah.
It's, um, there's this declaration of common driveway. It's the next page at the top, A. Yeah. So that, and I know maybe this is really planned somewhere else. Gravel bed and paved. Yeah, that's what I was thinking, Julian, it's the and. It's a gravel bed. Because if something comes up underneath it, you're going to have to fix that gravel bed. So that's why I think there should be an and there. So strike the OR and replace it with and. That's my, that's my thought, I'm just... If you got a pothole, you got to fix it, right? Yes, exactly. Sorry, I just don't want to make sure. No problem. That's only, that was the only thing, I had everything else. I like the way it was split up for the price, or for the repair. Number five takes Rutland out of the responsibility of doing anything. And the only other thing on six, Julian, is I like to see low come to lot. Just change the word from low to lot. Yeah, that would be good. I didn't write this, so... Okay. This is illegal stuff. Tell George you want some money back. So those... That's easy enough. Yep. Those, that's it for me. Come on, you have this, man. Yeah.
Okay, do we have any other questions or comments?
Just one. Just a simple one. People put driveways in and then they add lighting. I wouldn't want to see a big spotlight shine in my son's or in any neighbor's windows that they put up on a pole. You might want to be careful with that kind of lighting.
I agree.
If you put that restriction in there.
We can put that as a...
We're limited to posting. You know, people put poles up and they'll put a...
Well, this is site plan, you're right, it's not, if this was...
It's a special permit.
Oh, so we... We have it in our subdivision rules and regulations, but...
You certainly don't. We have anything about...
Yeah, you require lights. Yeah, and they're saying we don't want lights.
But it's a driveway, it's not really a road.
I think the board would be in its authority to impose that condition. It's a special permit, so the board has latitude to put conditions on a special permit.
So no lighting on the tilapia poles.
And connected to the site itself.
No big spotlight.
Say no lighting.
Two thousand, two hundred one.
This is tough to do, Norm, isn't it?
Yeah.
They can put in their own. I mean, you could put lighting in, like, down at the, in Holden, at the condominiums, that basically you can land a plane on. Yeah, we don't want that. Um, or you can, you can do on some of the subdivisions in Holden, where they got the antique lighting that's maybe, you know, two or three hundred, four hundred looms, which is just enough to see the road. Can't have lighting like we did with the cowwash. There was some verbiage.
In the case of the cowwash, that's an example where the board can put a condition with respect to lighting is site design.
That kind of, that...
Correct me if you're wrong.
To the neighbors.
If you put, if you put a pole on your property, you own the pole.
Yes.
So putting a big spotlight on the pole would be something that only the owner could do.
Well, and the orders of condition, being that luckily I got some streetlight background, you could put a, in there that you, lighting's allowed with a downward, you know, saying the, I don't...
Shielded downward.
Shielded downward lighting, which basically only that will light the road up, but doesn't light the area up. So like Dick says, it doesn't take away from your views of the skies.
Being an electrician, I understand that. It's a downward cast.
Thanks, yeah, off, off the luminaire, basically, you want it down.
No, I don't know.
Well, you can put that as a condition.
Or, or post of some sort, maybe. Post would be more residential, I would think.
Right. Either that, you can get a BB gun and...
Yeah.
Take care of it.
And any other questions or comments?
Only the buffer zone is all I am, because of the landscape script. And this is how, this is how lighting starts to... Just need one little zone, it's like Normity, all it needs a little zone to land in. Or five is landscape, landscaping and appearance. Yep. Under A. It's just, well, this seems a lot shorter than our previous ones. We're refining it. What's that? Make it simpler so that you'll actually follow. I get that, but I've dealt with lawyers too long, and what's simple is not... Lawyers do not put anything simple. I know, but sometimes simple doesn't help you out when you're in a court of law either, so... Legal review is not cheap. Not complicated enough. That was all the bases. Wait for another month and you'll see complications. New bylaws coming in. Nope, uh, they're not on the warrant, my young lad.
Really?
Not on the warrant. What happened, they had attorney general or the FPD law?
What?
Bylaws?
The State Board and Finance Committee decided that since we don't, the matter of bylaws has been sent to town council. We don't have a reply from them at the time of their Thursday meeting, so they said, no, whatever.
Oh, for goodness sakes. So November's going to be a long meeting. Well, mine, oh, long. Anyway. Oh, the only other thing I was, Norm, that I saw in the plan that I, I was going to ask if we could amend it, is they've got the sign for the two properties. It's, it's not out at the road, it's actually back where emergency vehicles, unless they came down that road, can't see at that driveway. I think it should be out on Wachusett Street, that's my opinion. Okay. See, they've got the sign that says right there. It's required by the bylaw.
Off the hot top of it. It has one in Wachusett Street.
Yeah, but they don't, on the plan doesn't show that, so... There's one right up, there's one there. Says right at the Wachusett Street. Where, on the drawing? On this drawing. Oh, no, no, yeah, but I'm looking at this drawing, it only has it here. Oh, on the, well, it's on the drawing, this drawing, the site plan drawing, that it has, right there, driveway sign. All right, we don't have this one. Oh, you do, but you don't have it. Okay. Okay. That just shows the, oh, yeah, it shows the greater... As long as that's there, because I saw the one back here, but I didn't see this one. So, okay, I'm good now. I just want to make sure, emergency. When Seth pulls up, he knows where to go.
Yeah.
So long as it's not too close to the highway, like the, the sale sign that's knocked over. Yeah. I don't have any else.
Okay, once again, any more questions, comments?
Anybody?
Anyone from the public or on Zoom? Hearing none.
Motion to close the hearing?
I got one more question. I don't have the formal document in my hand, so maybe it's in the document, but as far as like the landscaping, like clearing any brush or tree limbs from the common driveway, is there a statement on who would be responsible for that?
Yes, it's, it's in the thing, it says, the cost and repair, maintenance, snow and ice move from driveway shall be divided among lot owners. And then it said paid, this was ground keeping, which was the removal, I'm going to start from the beginning. The removal and disposal of fallen limbs, trees, and clearing a move of all brush and foliage shall be, or which would be unsightly and/or obstruct the site, site of vehicles using the common driveway or would interfere with drainage from the common driveway. The removal and disposal of litter, the removal and disposal of litter, period. That doesn't make a lot of sense, but anyhow. Proper maintenance of grass, bushes, and other bedchese within the common driveway and, and easement. The cost of such repairs, maintenance, snow and ice removal from the driveway shall be divided among the lot owners as follows. One half for lot one, one half for lot two. Okay. And it says in the great unit area, so... And then it says past that the lot owner shall be responsible for maintenance and repair of the lot owner's individual driveways. So it's a common driveway is where they share it, and once it gets on their property or... And they only have rights in the easement itself. Correct. A foot over it, but... Yeah.
Just to be clear, my understanding of it right away is he can use the driveway to access parts of his property if he needs to.
Absolutely. Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah. Yes, he can. Everybody wants to put a driveway off of that.
Somebody's going to clear the culvert out or...
Every experience on this part.
Yeah, it's all part of it.
He just doesn't want to be part of the maintenance package here.
Okay, uh, we have a motion.
To close the hearing.
Do we have a second? A second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call above, Kevin?
Aye.
Marilyn?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Yes?
Aye.
Norm, aye.
Now, do you need a motion to approve site plan, or no, this is special permit?
Are we ready to do this?
I am convinced, as long as we've got some orders of condition in here.
If we could just go over those one more time. If we need to mark up on a plan to do that, if need be.
Yeah, we could use that, the red line, here, I got a red pen. Oh, you got one too, yeah, sorry.
So lighting restriction. Lighting restriction.
Culvert.
Culvert.
Either maintenance replacement or installation.
Like in kind change, replacement? Is that... Maybe the best, like in kind of replacement. Yeah.
And twelve-foot width instead of, what they're showing is eighteen on the flames here.
Mm-hmm.
Now regarding the culverts, would you like to identify what culvert you're talking about here?
Right. Right between the two hot ones. That's the low point. I could show it.
Yeah, I'm not going to, I'm just going to keep trying.
Dick, did you want to put something in there about vegetation? The green? I think the swales are going to take care of a lot of that. That's my opinion, but...
So this is the one that we upgraded that, what about, what about the...
That would be... Trees take care of all kinds of water.
May not want to replace it.
The problem is when you get trees next to asphalt, roots destroy asphalt.
Won't be in my lifetime, so I'm not going to want to create any damage effects of any kind.
So this is DVA, what purpose does this need?
I mean, I, I know this is sort of petty, but can we indicate that we would prefer to have swaled sides to the easement road or easement driveways? Just to put it in there? Swell on side to bring water to the low area. Yeah, that's, I'd like to see that in there, just to make sure it's covered.
Where?
Right between the twelve-foot width with swales.
Yeah.
Sides.
On lot three's easement, I guess, is the best way to say it. The whole. The whole way, just to bypass. No issues. That's a simple thing to do. I can't think of anything else that we talked about.
And the lights we're talking about.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I like the... No white lights. The lights with downward luminaires, I guess, downward facing luminaires for the light.
If desired by the owner, I'm not making that something you have to do.
No, I think it's, I think that if they do put in lights, that's their only option.
Yeah. But I just wanted to be clear.
Oh, yeah, they don't have to put it in.
They don't have to put it in.
Yeah. Although if they did, that would be my little beachhead dick for the streetlights. Throw something at me, go ahead.
I was thinking about how to stack one of the drones.
Yeah.
To go after lights.
Okay. Okay, any other discussion? We have a motion and a second.
Norm, I missed to leave the motion and the second on granting the special permit.
I made... Didn't make it. I, oh, I thought I made it. Okay, I'll make a motion to grant the special permit with conditions as laid out in this meeting.
Okay.
Well, once again, this is a ready discussion. Hearing none. And once again, roll call, all in favor, Kevin?
Aye.
Marilyn?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
Norm, aye.
Thank you.
Considering our already almost backlog of decisions, we're looking at maybe a little while. Considering our already almost backlog of decisions, maybe a little while.
I'm doing my best to work through that backlog.
Sounds like we should maybe talk to Gary's board, talks about some overtime. Let me rephrase that. Paid overtime.
Thank you very much.
All right. Great. All right, I got it. That'll be cleared out. I'm a questionable individual. I like to know who our guests are. Let me finish up this phone. Who? Curious of what our guest is here for. I apologize, I don't know you. I just was curious.
No, hi, nice to meet you guys. I'm Matt Shaughnessy with.
Okay.
243 Pleasantville Road.
Okay, good.
Gonna try as a write-in to get on the board, so I wanted to check it out and see what it's all about. I've been in a few years ago. There was something done in a butter in the state, so I just kinda wanted to see what it's all about.
Okay, good. Excellent.
Nice to meet you guys. Thank you.
So what are we on to?
Okay.
Number eight?
Number eight, I guess we're on the next one of the appeals.
Okay. Just reshuffle my papers here. Okay, yeah, so we're done with the packet. So we just stop sharing. See what going to zoning board page.
When you bring that up, Dave, can you still share it?
That's my attempt.
Okay.
I believe I can.
Cool, I wanted to make sure Kevin was able to see it. Cuz I didn't do it.
Yeah, I definitely have no idea what this is about. We're on number eight, correct?
Yes.
Number eight. And what is out in the back part of that plaza?
River Road is down by 68.
Campground.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was, I was thinking Ridge Road. I had that pictured in my mind over on the west side of the road. No rivers down there.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, now. What the heck would be down there?
Like I said.
So now what exactly is, I'm looking at, I didn't see anything on our packet here, David, on eight.
No, there isn't.
We're not looking at anything either.
He sent out an email link.
A link to a website, Kevin, and I didn't, I didn't go to it, so.
Yeah, yeah.
So Dave's trying to bring it up right now, so we can all see it.
I guess for ease, it was, I just sent out a link to it. With the expectation that we can access it tonight, which we, there's. Oops, I believe we can now access, we can now see that? Can you verify that for us?
I can see this, yep. Yep.
All right, thank you. So with the expectation that we can share this. I just need to do one more thing. I need to find out where the audience is here. Just gotta do one good thing here and. Get to the front. All right, so there it is. This is the application for this matter. This is coming up for a zoning board of appeals hearing, I believe, on the 11th of May. As the board knows, if there's matters that will be appeared before the board, the planning board has the ability to review these and offer comments if it would like. So what we have here is a special permit to modify a nonconforming use. Why this is nonconforming is because where this is located, by the Hubbardston line, used to be a commercial zone area. It was changed from commercial to residential in 2008, I believe.
Is that the Villitson?
I don't recall. I think it was like a business district.
I don't remember it being changed. I always thought it was business.
It was a business district.
Yeah.
And it was changed to residential in 2008. So prior to the change, there wasn't allowed commercial use located at the site. And there's been a continuous commercial use of a similar nature from the time of the zoning change to the present. It's not conforming because when the zoning change occurred, the use was no longer allowed. So because it was something operating continuously, this allows the applicant to apply for the special permit to change or modify a previous, pre-existing nonconforming use. Why they need a special permit is because your use is different than the continuous prior use.
So right now it's residential, and they wanna have it basically a business.
Well, there's currently a business there that is, is a, that's operated continuously since before the zoning changed.
Okay.
And registered at the very end, just before you went to Hubbardston.
So it's grandfathered in, basically?
Yeah, it has vested rights.
Yeah, okay.
That's right. So this, that's the establishment of the vested right.
Yeah.
So the task is establish the vested right and then evaluate the proposed new use to see if it's substantially different than the existing use. If so, that's where the special permit comes into play. So what this is called Parkers Packards. This is a restoration company that specializes in what type of automobile. They're currently located elsewhere surrounding town. The applicant has the ability to move into town and expand their business. So from an economic development perspective, this is a desirable petition. And that the applicant, as you'll see, has a very detailed application consisting of 23 pages. What they do is they break out the timeline of the established nonconforming, break out the timeline, provide a history, and provide a detail of what they would like to do. So this is, I think, a beneficial use for the town, I believe. For what I understand, the use would be indoors, given the type of vehicles that they service, they want to secure these vehicles.
Dave, is this, is this like the restoration service off of 122A? And I apologize, that does the Range Rovers and stuff like that?
I think it's similar to that. So there are serious hobbyists who like Packards. It's a very serious hobby that some of these folks have. So we're talking high-value vehicles.
Yes.
You know, with restoration. I don't know if it gets to 100-point restoration, but high-value restoration for very valuable vehicles. So these folks would like to do this indoors and to protect the vehicles and the operation. So my understanding is that the operation itself would occur primarily indoors.
And they're taking over the space of where the fence company is right now?
That's correct. So there's a fence company at the 60 by 90 Morton Building, which is on the premises now. That's the existing use.
Okay.
But this use is different enough where the special permit comes into play. A lot modification of the, of the nonconforming use. So the applicant has a narrative here.
Yep, I read.
They have tables contents, which is well-developed. They have the timeline, which talks about when the zoning changed.
Yeah.
The before and the after. And then they get into some more details about the location of the site, how the lot has changed over time, because the lot shape has certainly changed over time. But they.
What's the, Dave, what's the total acreage on the green space? Does it?
Let me try to zoom in here to get that for you.
I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm curious of. It looks like 16 acres or almost 17 acres. I know it goes up and over. I see it right below where it says lot 6A. I think that's 16.69. Yep, so it's almost 17 acres. All right. It's a pretty big piece of property.
It is. While it appears to be big, it's actually constrained by wetlands issues. So the main area where the business would occur is up in the front here, which is split, uh, split town between Hubbardston and this town here. But the primary action is to just work with what's there. I don't understand that they seek to further expand back.
All right.
So you have a plan of the land. You have how the land has been divided throughout time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Before, you know, there was a guy that came in and he had land, not only there, part of, part of the Rotten and Hubbardston also. And I like to think that something happened to him or bankrupt or something like that. I know DCR picked up some more of the property on the, on the other side. Because that went over to the runway of the airport that was on the other side.
Oh, I didn't even know there was an airport over there.
Wayno Hallipena, the inventor of the back hall? He had his own plane for quite a while. He used to fly out to Detroit, Michigan all the time.
I'm not sure that would be one of the cities I would pick to fly to, but. All right, I'm good. I like this. This is a nice presentation.
I'm just curious about the, actually, it was industrial.
Well, that's, that's what bothers me too, because.
I can't remember who eight was the.
Who was it prior to precision fence?
The applicant has that in their information. Let me go back to their, this timeline has the occupants of the site throughout time.
Yeah.
We're just flipping around again and again here. This, this has the entities that have been there from time to time.
So JK purchases and before that Mark Flynn. Was Mark Flynn the owner of Precision Fence?
No, that name doesn't sound proper.
I'm not sure, but Mark Flynn was involved with the commercial business.
What's JK, JK, JKG? Is that? Oh, it says Morton Building was used for construction. So there must have been a construction company there.
Yeah.
Okay. That makes sense.
Flynn. Oh, man, I hate this old age change.
I just don't remember. I was on the board then, and I don't, cuz 08's when the whole crash happened, the whole, you know, 08 and 09 was where everything dumped in the real estate, the bubble burst.
You know, I'm just, the only thing I'm, I'm just kinda thinking, I'm not really grasping here, is we created the two industrial zones. Light Industrial and Light Industrial Office. But before that, there was probably an industrial.
Yeah, the applicant.
It was industrial.
Actually has the zoning map.
Since, since we created those two new ones, we probably didn't include any vehicles, so kinda by default.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, okay.
That just went to residential.
Yeah. Yeah, see, this is what I remember.
Because it was Wayno Hallipena.
Is the North Rutland Village Center and the Light Industrial. So where he's at is.
Doesn't show on the other side of the road.
Yeah, but that was all, that, that pink is the Village Center. And then we actually did leave, oh, that's residential zone, because that's Maria's subdivision up there in the rust-colored.
Yes, Patriot.
Yeah, Patriot Place or whatever. Yeah. Now, what is the purple? So we did leave Light Industrial and Office behind the Village Center. I didn't remember that.
Yep.
So it is there. And then the other one is residential, okay.
That, that's the lightest colored one.
Yeah.
That's industrial.
Yeah. Okay.
Right now, it's got solar fields in it.
But I just don't remember up, because river, isn't river just when you come off of 56? Make a left and it's right there?
No, it's a little ways down.
Okay.
Down the, down the, on the hill, you have Intervale Road comes out onto 68.
Yeah.
Right across is River Road.
I just don't remember if it doing anything with that.
That little, it used to be a restaurant thing.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Something's happening with that right now, too.
Okay. All right, I just, I just remember the Village Center. I remember spending a lot of time on that.
It was industrial. There's only, there are two houses on the right-hand side before the campground.
Yeah.
One is over the river, which DCR is very upset with way back when, but, you know, they had to deal with it. And the other one, that was originally owned by Wayno Hallipena. So he owned that property up through there and he had it industrialized.
Okay.
When he was making the.
Let's keep going, cuz I, I really likes. I was gonna, if things don't change, I'm gonna say, can we give a recommendation to ZBA that the planning board?
Over what?
No.
The thing, the thing is, they, they just, they're gonna be the special permitting granting authority.
I'm just, I was supporting it, I guess is what I was gonna say. Support this change.
We can do that.
That's what I, that's what I was trying to say, is I like to support this change, cuz I think it's a good change.
Oh, yeah.
Especially since Dave's on the economic development and it's a positive for the town.
And I do believe the house that's across the street is set back some distance too, so.
I just, any business that we can get into town or help get into town is always a positive.
Yep.
I don't think this deters from the neighborhood, so.
Well, that, I mean, that would just be the only thing that I would bring up, is that there's been a business for however long, as long as that business, whatever is next, doesn't add to the noise or add to the light or add to the, you know, if it's just an indoor repair facility, there was a fencing company there, there was, you know, it doesn't seem like it's not similar to what it was, or even, say, a quieter possible operation.
Yeah, Kevin, to your point, there's gonna be less, cuz with the fencing company, you got the big trucks coming in with the cranes to move stuff around. They're not gonna have it. They're gonna have a tow truck coming in or a flatbed, and that's it.
The thing is, that, that will all be up to the ZBA.
That's true.
By the looks of it, now they also own that piece in the back.
Good storage facility.
Yeah, that fellow was trying to dispose of.
All right, what else you got, Dave? Ten more pages.
We can send just a favorable recommendation on the applications for the special permit.
I think we should.
Definitely.
All right.
Just to give the applicants some support from the planning board.
Yeah.
When was that hearing? I believe it's the 11th of May. If I'm not mistaken, do you have a calendar?
Yep, that's correct. It's May 11th.
May 11th, yeah, thank you. All right, good.
Okay, item 10 is next. Musqueback Road.
Yes, we have decisions for both of those.
Site review on the rest of the uses.
Does the board, would you like a copy of it or just the, the final copy? I've made individual copies.
I've read, cuz you, these just came in the email that you sent. And I, I read through those, your emails. So.
So that's just the final?
I did have.
Copy.
Did anything come up with 216 Wachusett Street about traffic with the sign that they were gonna put up? Did you get any feedback from anybody?
What sign?
The.
They were gonna put a sign on 68.
Yeah, exactly.
But that was up to the select board.
And the select board had come back with a comment about more accidents and up at the, at that traffic light area, and they were sure about the sign that was gonna go up. And I was like, is that gonna impact our decision?
No, I think they were gonna.
I don't.
The sign was gonna go further down the road.
Okay, all right, I just.
There's no sign as part of the site plan.
Yeah, that's offsite.
Okay, all right. I'm fine with that. I just wanted to make sure, cuz I, I saw that when I was watching the select board video, and I'm like, oh, is that gonna affect what we did? So, okay, good enough, thanks.
I didn't read all of it. I didn't see any thoughts of it.
I did have a question, Dave. Special permits can come up for review, you know, like if we want to, once a year or every two years. Site plan, does that have any, any expiration date on it?
No, site plan is a different animal altogether. Site plan has a lower threshold for decision-making.
Yes.
As of right use, that, the only thing the board is looking at, the site plan aspects of it.
Okay.
It's not the same as a special permit, no.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. I, just basically, what I didn't want to happen is every year, the three applicants that we've signed off on has to come back to us.
No, that's not.
Okay, perfect, thanks.
Worthy Chairman, could I ask a question?
Yes.
Uh, this is Randy Jordan, 51 Musqueback Road. I had asked this to David George there when we originally had turned the permit in, and I believe there was a $500 fee for the agricultural[1754.08] and I believe there was a $500 fee for the agricultural, um, site plan review. And I asked if there would be any consideration of reducing that or waiving that fee for an agricultural site plan review, where I didn't know where there would be an expense on there, where we had to fill out the paperwork ourselves and do the envelopes and stamps and all that. That was upon each one of us individually to do it. And David said it was a legitimate question that I asked, but he didn't know the answer. And I know I didn't bring it up before and I happened to stimulate some interest when I saw other people had paid for a special site plan review, but not an agricultural one. They had much more paperwork involved and more homework and investigation there. So I didn't know if there would be any consideration for the agricultural site plan review of waiving some of the fee or all of the fee.
I don't know if the Board wants to consider that, but if you do, I can account for some of the expenses put into this.
The advertisement's the first thing.
Staff time.
Yeah.
Right, the decision and all the other staff support as well.
I just...
I'll tell you, you spent more than 15 minutes on this.
So if the Board does go in that direction, I would not be advocating for a refund of the hire amount. Because there was a substantial amount of staff time put in on this matter as well as the legal adage you just noted.
I don't wanna set a precedent. That's gonna be my comment.
If we have an established fee, you know, unless there's something, something really extenuating, I...
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd love to, but it just doesn't make sense.
And it comes back to the discussion that we had with Brian's, or, I'm sorry, Mr. Senical, that the fee's the fee.
Yeah, what do you do with the next one?
Yeah. I don't think this is an individual case by case. I really don't.
Plus, we've already had at least one that comes to mind in the past that, you know, we charged the 500.
Yeah, that's... I just don't... Yeah, I... I'll let the rest of the Board speak, but I think I wanna stick.
I would also just draw the Board's attention to that. The Board recently changed the... Recently reduced the fee for site plan because there was another $200 for advertising contenders. So the Board went from 700 down to 500 recently. So the fee has in fact been reduced, um, not too long ago. Just to eliminate that advertising fee because that doesn't apply to anything else.
And why I didn't think it was that bad is I just saw the ZBA's fee of $500 to do any type of review, so...
Which is consistent with staff made a record, policy recommendation to the zoning board that it modified its fees and we came up with a rationale and that was what was advised and that's what the zoning board ended up going with. It was an early uniformity.
That's what I would like to see. That's what I would also like to see, you know, what's the average legal fees and all the, everything that, you know, come up with the calculation. How can one...
$500 for doing a, with the review with the site time, the advertising, um, research time. And I get that the applicants put their time into it too. I understand that. But $500, you can burn that real quick. I mean, at, say, Dave, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give him a little bit of cost estimate. Say he's $100 an hour for his services. It's five hours and that's it. That doesn't include, I'm guessing the telegram is probably, what, 87 or 90 bucks now?
A little bit more than that, yeah.
So give me an idea, 125?
About 100, on average. We try to write the most, the skinniest legal dollars that we can write. I will say that this is accurate. I did defer to the Board on whether the Board wanted to do this. But if the Board was to entertain this, I would say zero. But anyways.
I just... I don't wanna set a precedent. I'll go back to my speech.
And, you know, 500 can sound like a bunch, but...
It does, but it doesn't. That's the problem.
I just had, I had a new kitchen sink drain put in by a plumber. The bill was 500 bucks.
Oh, yeah.
You know? So...
I wanna help farmers out.
Yeah, I know. I would like to too, but...
I just...
That's my opinion. I'm not saying that.
I agree with you.
I don't know. Do we wanna make that a formal motion? To decline or no?
I'll make a motion that we stand with our fee structure for these agricultural accessory bylaw, site plan review.
I will second.
Is there any discussion?
This is not anything to do with Randy. This is just strictly period.
Standard operating procedure type thing.
Yeah.
You know, we set fees and we're not gonna start...
But it doesn't hurt to ask. I have no problem with asking.
Oh, it doesn't hurt to ask.
I just wanna make sure that we're fair to, the next three or four people come in.
That's just it.
Because there better be three or four more people coming in.
And these were calculated fees. We just didn't, didn't come up, you know, pull them out of the hat.
And on the flip side, like Dave said, we reduced it $200.
Right.
And also working with the zoning board on that fee recommendation, you went into all the main aspects that make up the fee. We determined that 500 pretty much is not a profit center. It's capturing the...
It's capturing staff costs and auxiliary, auxiliary advertising that we have.
So it's fiscally prudent to capture the cost of delivering the service.
Yes.
You know, that was how we came up with those as a recommendation. So I think what applies to the ZBA would apply to here. But those have the most freshest look.
Yeah.
I think the same rationale would apply here.
Okay.
Okay. Any discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Kevin?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Marilyn?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
Norm? Aye. Would like to help you, Randy, there, but...
What I just voted was not for Randy.
No.
No.
It would create a bunch of problems for us.
Yeah, I...
Or it could.
It could.
Norman, I appreciate the comment. The only reason that I said that is, is $500 for some of the agricultural entities in town. I'm not saying myself. May or may not be making any money off of any of the site plan reviews they're doing. And in turn, they're less likely to apply for a permit. And where this committee has encouraged other farmers to go get it, the 500 could be a burden for some of them. And I just thought that, where I had thought about it before with Dave because I guess I was unaware of it in the beginning. And, you know, I wrote the check, will make it work, but yet others may not be able to do that in special circumstances or something. The only comment that I have. Thank you for the consideration.
I can appreciate your point of view.
We could, in the future, come up with something that equals $500 if there was a financial hardship. I don't know what that is. I'm not gonna give any ideas.
How many pounds of cheese did you want?
I was thinking, I was thinking a new assistant town planner.
Oh!
I used the word assistant.
Before you move on, I think if the Board wanted to give itself some latitude to consider means as a test to reduce the fee, as the Board knows, there's a pre-hearing conference that occurs. It could also be a pre-application conference, indicating, with someone indicating they wanna move on this. And...
They've got financial hardship.
They could make their case well before they actually file the application.
Yeah.
Which would give them the opportunity to have their site plan recognized and make their case before they go too far along with an application and all the things that go into it and get a sense of the Board whether or not a means test would be appropriate in a given specific circumstance.
Okay.
I liked the, yeah, the way he laid it out.
Upper funds.
I just wanna make sure we can get everybody that wants to do, that uses agriculture bylaw. We get signed up, we get the site plan review, so everything in town is above board. And to Kevin's point in the past, then we can show to different parts of Massachusetts. We got seven farms that are agricultural accessory and they're doing agricultural tourism or agricultural... So I think Kevin said this earlier. We a center of agricultural tourism and, uh, business in the state of Massachusetts, so... I wouldn't wanna kill that over 500, but...
Hate to say this, but it was right. Do we have a motion to sign this?
I don't think you got that far. I think you just talked about the fee.
I have a motion to sign... I'm just looking for the name.
Site plan review.
The site plan review.
Decision.
Decision on Zero East County Road.
This is Muscatburg 51.
Muscatburg, sorry, that's what I was looking for. Muscatburg Road.
Second? I think we should do them one at a time, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll second the Muscatburg.
Is there any discussion? That's right. Are you recusing yourself on this one?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Kevin?
I will be signing nay.
He said nay. He's not gonna sign.
Okay. Tim?
Uh, yes, aye.
Marilyn?
Aye.
Norm? Aye. The motion carries. And this is the clean copy you want us to sign?
Yes, please.
In site plans, a majority, correct, Dave?
Uh, three. Yes, it's a supermajority.
Special permit is the supermajority.
Supermajority, yeah.
Yep.
Four out of five.
Yep. One of my, one of the FICOM members wanted you to know that it was just the selectmen that made the decision not to place the bylaws changes. It wasn't the FICOM.
It was a joint meeting before the call.
Yeah. Stayed 26th. Guess where the signatures are going on? I'll make a motion to sign 216 Watchus Street Site Plan Review Agriculture Accessory Uses Decision.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Elites too over, they're virtually identical, so...
Yes.
So I have, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I'm hearing no discussions. Then, roll call vote. Kevin?
Nay.
Tim?
Aye.
Marilyn?
Aye.
Norm? Aye.
Dick abstains.
Dick abstains, yes.
Oh.
Motion carries.
Dave, I didn't get to 13, so I'll have to review it.
I'll give that, I mean, if you'd like to go into that tonight, otherwise, that's fine. It's up to the Board. You do have the presentation. If you'd like to look at and ask any questions at a future time, that's fine too.
That is an option.
So, whatever, it's up to you. It was just a follow-up from the business meeting concept to try and get topics out there for discussion, so...
I just...
How can we get money into the doggone parks? I noticed I discussed it yesterday going down to Putnam Park.
And it's a disaster.
Nobody's touched that place.
Well, when Randy helped, helped for the, uh... Randy and his guys at the, uh, over at Jordan Dairy Farm, when we did the food truck, they literally came over and had to mow everything because it was so bad because Director Buckley just doesn't have a line or the personnel, so...
Well, when I was, I was talking to Dave about it and who pops his head in? But Joe Buckley and I asked him if he could go down there because right at the entrance, as you're going in, about 50 feet, there's a broken off limb, you know, part of a tree sitting right there. If we come down it.
It hurts him.
And I said, can you just send somebody down there with a front end over and push it over, get it out of the way? I never got the money.
He literally, yeah.
And I wanna go down there and, and try to open up some of the old trails.
It's so bad that potentially next year around April, his vehicles will be sitting like Rommel's tanks, no gas.
I'm sick of this.
I get it.
Is there any access off the road really to get in there?
Yeah. You can drive down in there, yeah.
Worthy Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, just to give you a heads up, I believe one of the Boy Scouts of Troop 141 is considering doing a renovation at Putnam Park there for their upcoming Eagle Scout project.
Oh, that'd be nice. Sounds nice.
Can we have a discussion about that sometime? At least, you know, I am on the open space. And also was part of the town and we...
Yes, since we're talking about this, I'd like to be part of that conversation too because there was a town center study done and one of the big recommendations was that park, to try to get that park back into a better usable condition. So that's a great idea if there's resources available.
Thank you.
I will, with one of the boys of our thing, I will certainly make sure, a point of suggesting that they speak to you folks before they go too far.
Thank you.
A motion to adjourn.
I have no problem with that.
What are we gonna do about 12?
12's...
He doesn't have any.
Doesn't have anything for us yet.
Yeah.
That's why I'm suggesting that we talk to the interim town manager and get him some paid overtime.
Oh, you.
He doesn't seem apt to that, so I think I'll pull that back.
Thank you.
Oh, that's right, you got kids. You can't do that. Overtime's not good.
Okay.
Need a second, somebody.
I was gonna say, I have a motion to adjourn.
I still second.
Do I hear it to make her screaming?
Is there any discussion? Roll call. Kevin? Kevin, are you there? Well, Marilyn?
Aye.
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Norm? Aye. Marilyn says, where is she?
838.